...the administration for order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of February 1st through 2010. I have a motion for approval. So moved second.
I can't second it, I'm not a member of the committee.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. That there is a revision there to the agenda. Previous item 1B1 has been eliminated and a new item 1B9 has been added. Vice Chancellor Waters, will you introduce item B2, the reappointment of a sitting commissioner of the CUNY Civil Service Commission?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I am here to put forward a resolution regarding the reappointment of Elaine S. Reese to the CUNY Civil Service Commission. The CUNY Civil Service Commission was established in 1988 to oversee all civil service operations for the university and to administer provisions in the New York State education law as well as CUNY rules and regulations regarding the civil service. The commission enforces rules covering classification of CUNY civil service and acts as the guardian of the merit system for classified staff. In addition, the commission is responsible for hearing cases of individuals in managerial titles as that group of employees is not represented by a union. Such cases may include examination of complaints, work conditions, and disciplinary issues. The commission is made up of three members appointed by the chancellor with the advice and consent of the Board of Trustees. Each of these commissioners serve for a term of six years. The current members of the commission are Marilyn J. Flood, who is the chairperson, Tilden J. Lemell, and Elaine S. Reese. The resolution being presented today authorizes the chancellor to reappoint Ms. Elaine S. Reese, whose current term expires on May 31st, 2010, for an additional six-year term from June 1st, 2010 through May 31st, 2016. Ms. Reese is well qualified for the position. She serves on the faculty of Brooklyn Law School and has also served as acting deputy commissioner and general counsel for the Department of Employment of the City of New York. Madam Chair, I present this matter for the committee's consideration.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Senior Vice Chancellor Rick Shafer, would you introduce item B3?
Yes, this resolution involves three amendments to the governance plan for the School of Professional Studies. First, it authorizes the School of Professional Studies Council to establish an academic appeals committee and a student government body in accordance with the bylaws and policies of the Board of Trustees. This corrects an oversight in the original governance plan which had omitted such a provision. Second, the proposed amendments delete the provision prohibiting the School of Professional Studies from offering degree programs other than online programs that are the same as those currently offered by another CUNY college. This provision was unique to the School of Professional Studies and does not apply to any other college or school within CUNY. The existence of appropriate academic competition within the university appears to have been beneficial overall and should be extended to the School of Professional Studies. Finally, the proposed amendments delete the provision that revenue generated by the school should be used for doctoral support to the extent possible. Since the creation of the School of Professional Studies, the university has established a major program of support for doctoral students, making this provision unnecessary.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Yes, Professor.
I've had extensive discussions with the doctoral student council about the adequacy of the additional funding directed by the university, which of course is graciously accepted by new students, but the funding is still insufficient for dissertation year coverage, for travel, and for research money, and that doctoral student support is such that the doctoral student council would like to have this support continued.
Mr. Chancellor?
Well, look, we have provided enormous amount of support for graduate students beyond what this university has done in its past. A significant amount of money has been placed into doctoral support of stipends, tuition, remission, and full benefits for health care. So I think the university needs to be applauded for doing this, of rearranging our budget. And as a result of that, what the university has demonstrated and has been the recipient of is a very, very different change in the quality of the students that we're getting into our doctoral programs. Is it enough? I think you can ask the question about every other item that we have in the university. Do we have enough faculty? No. Do we have enough support for academic support services? No. Do we have enough supportive counselors? No. Do we have enough capital to build and equip our facilities? No. This is a university that needs a lot more money. So I don't see this particular area as any other, you know, reason to reorient the way in which our resources are allocated. The amount of effort that we've done for graduate education here has been exemplary. And we're going to continue to find ways to deploy more and more money so that every doctoral student who comes full-time, I mean, our objective is for every doctoral student who comes full-time to get the kind of support. That has other kinds of ramifications, but I don't think to really go back and tax the School of Professional Studies, which would be a modicum of support in any case, is the appropriate thing, and that's the reason that it's in the governance plan that you're about to consider for revision.
May I say one further thing?
You can say as much as you'd like.
The special focus of my remarks, which was perhaps buried, is that the fellowship support, the chances fellowships, which are very, very handsome for incoming students in a competitive environment, do not reach into the sixth year, which is the year in which most students do their dissertation. That fellowship money, since restricted to the first five years, leaves a gap in student support. Now, the university could try to address that separately, or it could address it with this particular provision, or leave things the way they are. I thought it was a good idea to raise this in this context, with this way of having direct support of a limited sort.
Stephen, I applaud you for bringing it up. I'm not debating the merits of the argument. I would point out to you, which you know well, that it is standard practice of all graduate schools, that I am aware of, that there is a commitment for five years. There is rarely a commitment beyond the five years. Now, obviously, depending upon the discipline, if a faculty member is running a laboratory that is supported by external funding, the advisor would always try to find the subvention of support for a sixth year or possibly a seventh year. But this university in our past, and it's only been in our recent past, never even came up with a commitment for five years. So the point that I'm making is that we've taken a major leap forward, and do we need to do more? Yes. But compared to what we were doing in our past, this has been a total reformation, if you will, of the acknowledgement of the importance and need to attract the best doctoral students that we can. And I think we've done a great job and will continue to do more as time goes by.
Thank you, Chancellor. May, yes?
Is there any harm in just leaving the provision as is, or is it just completely necessary that we'd have to?
I think it was not a good thing to do to begin with, quite frankly. It never made too much sense. This was done more for expediency at the time, but there's no reason that we should take one particular school and treat it in a manner different than any other school here at the university. And that really is the case here. We've singled out one institution that is generating revenue as other schools are generating and saying that you have to take part of your revenue and do certain things that no other school has been asked to do. And I think that's just basically wrong, and I think it just needs to be corrected. Whatever the deficiency is, which is marginal, quite really very little money, we're going to try in our next budget to increase the amount of support for doctoral students on an ongoing basis.
Matt Cole, yes, Madam President?
It was not my intent to talk about the doctoral student support issue, but I should mention just in passing that at the start of the School of Professional Studies, it was mainly a continuing education operation, and it was a view of many people that it would be, support other aspects of the university, including the graduate school in which it was housed. And so there was a rationale at the beginning. At the same time, of course, that support has, despite the board's policy written into it, has not been forthcoming for the last few years. And so in fact, continue it would have no effect because it has not, the support is not currently being provided, even though it is written into the governance document. That wasn't the main thrust of my comments, though. What I wanted to say separately was, in terms of the non-compete clause of the school, the school is being run by one of the university's most able administrators. And I'd like to say that with some underlining. Dean Mogalescu is in fact one of our most able administrators. Yet it has a governance document that is appropriate for the School of Continuing Education, not of a college. It's radically different than any other college. It doesn't have departments, it doesn't have PMBs, it doesn't have a college senate that's mainly elected rather than appointed, it has appointed faculty. And so that is really the only source of concern relative to this body. I would applaud competition between SPS and other colleges. That's a good thing. But it's for the health of the university, it's a bad thing if one unit of the university has a governance structure that is so much in contrast with the rest of it and at the same time has no faculty of its own. If you look at the faculty list, there are all, most of them are full-time faculty but have their major appointments at other units of the university. There are very few, if any, maybe one or two, who have their primary appointment at the School of Professional Studies. It's not a mature body, it's not a college in the sense that other colleges are. And I would encourage this board to ensure that the school adopt a mature governance structure that provides for academic freedom, doesn't have a simplified and an express appointment process, does not have appointments that are semester by semester, year by year, but has some protection for faculty opinion. Dean Mogalescu is a very good dean. He won't be there forever. And the governance document has to be written, not for this dean in particular, but for unknown deans in the future. That's the responsibility of the board, and the board actually hasn't fulfilled that responsibility. It's not, the discussion isn't about the non-compete clause. The changes in the governance structure of SPS have to trigger a discussion of what that structure should eventually be. It's no longer a school of, it's not a continuing education operation as it was at the beginning. It's now offering a baccalaureate and master's level of degrees like a college would. It should have a more mature college level structure, I think.
I think governance charter, governance charters, excuse me, I've been.
Freudian slip.
I have to reorient my brain for a second. Governance plans are living documents. They should be living documents. They change as the needs of the entity of which it was designed to govern changes. And as the School of Professional Studies matures, and I, you invoked John Mogalescu's name, I would underscore the accolades that you've given for him, what he has done and others connected with that school has done has been nothing less than exemplary. It was conceived by me, and so I have to take responsibility for it, as a nimble institution that can change rapidly with respect to conditions in the environment in which it is connected. And it has done that, and it's done that in a remarkable way. And as time progresses, I think you're right. The governance plan should be adjusted, and it will. One of the geniuses of the City University of New York, and in part it's because of the close proximity of all of our campuses to one another, I always invoke the statement that there's really no campus that's more than about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes from one another. We can rely on the great intellectual strength of the university without, depending upon which individual school is generating that intellectual depth. We call it the, we call it the integrated university. And I think the School of Professional Studies is one of the best examples of how the integrated university could be generated with great intellectual strength and broadened kinds of academic programs by picking up each of the individual components. And I think that's been its genius, and it probably needs over time to adjust as it matures into a very different institution than it was originally conceived. So I don't have any argument with that. I would also want to say one thing, your opening remark about that there were no subvention of support given from the, from the school to graduate students at the early stages. It was written in but never implemented. The reason for that was, at that time, we devoted a big chunk of our operating budget and reoriented it to support doctoral students. So we really thought it was redundant, number one, and rather immaterial, number two, in terms of the overall support. So that's really what the history was.
If I could make one correction to what, it appears that you interpreted what I said, I think there was support for doctoral students in one year, but after that not. So just to make that clear.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I'd like to call on the special counsel to President Ferdinand Fernandez to introduce item B4, amendments to the governance plan of Lehman College.
Thank you, Trustee Beal, and good evening to everyone. My name is Edras Tullier, I'm special counsel to President Fernandez, and it's an honor to be here on behalf of the President. He happens to be out of town on fundraising.
Oh, I'd like to hear that.
If I may turn to the item, the main objective of the proposed changes in the governance plan of Lehman College is to make it easier for the college senate to meet quorum requirements. The senate has grown over time to now having 138 slots. And each time a new ex officio appointment is made in the administration, there is triggered additional senate seats for faculty and student representatives. And so the proposed changes, which came about primarily through the work of the governance committee of the senate and working with the administration, changes the representation in that instead of proportional representation, there would be absolute numbers. The senate in total would have a membership of 102, down from the 138 members currently. There are two other matters as well that are addressed by the proposal, and that is the departmental representation on the senate as well as membership in departmental PMBs. Under the proposal, departmental representatives must have two years of service before being eligible to be on the senate. And with regards to department PMBs, four of the five members of the department PMB would need to be tenured under the proposal unless, of course, there are fewer than four tenured faculty members in the department. The proposal was voted twice by the senate. Although passed by unanimous voice vote on both occasions, the votes did not satisfy the two-thirds required to pass an amendment to the governance structure. We hope that and expect that adopting these amendments would solve this problem in the future, and we respectfully request that you approve these amendments. And thank you on behalf of the President and the college senate.
Thank you. Jessica.
I'd like to support the comments of Mr. Tullier. I would be presiding, actually, at the Lehman College senate today if it weren't for this meeting. The President usually presides, and in the absence of the President, it would fall to me to do that, as the elected person to do that. But our schedule of this meeting, of course, prevented that, and I'd like to make note of that, that we should not be scheduling things on, meetings that usually occur on Mondays or Tuesdays should not be dropped in on Wednesdays and conflict with functions that happen on campuses like is happening today. At the same time, I'd like to support his comments in terms of the process for this document, and I encourage you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. President Carolyn Williams, will you introduce item five, I mean, B5?
I certainly will. It's similar to the last one, is the college is proposing five amendments to the governance plan for adoption. Several of the amendments come directly from the open meetings law, including the changing of the definition of quorum, voting requirements, and the rules of order to be followed. These changes are reflected in Section 1A 3, 1G 1A 4, and 1B 1. With the changes in the quorum requirements under the open meetings law, the college also recommends instituting the option of alternates to serve on the senate and eliminating a position to create vacancies, which has rarely, if ever, been implemented. These changes are reflected in Section 1A and 1E 7. The amendments were approved by the college community as follows. It passed by the senate with recommendations from the Committee on Governance and Elections between April 2008 and February 2009. It was presented to the faculty and the student body for ratification in spring 2009. They were passed by the required 30 percent vote of the faculty but did not achieve the required 10 percent vote of the student body. They were presented again to the senate for the two-third vote and passed on October 1st, 2009 by unanimous vote of 43 members. I'd like to recommend adoption of the amendment.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. President Tony Perez to introduce item B6, amendments to the governance plan of the Borough of Manhattan Community College.
I'll let the House do that for me, and I'll sit with and answer any questions. Good afternoon, oh, good evening. In 1977, BMCC went through a major governance revision. As a result, we've been living through that plan, and we have found it necessary to make some adjustments to this plan. We did one a couple of years ago, and we're presenting four changes to our governance plan this evening that we would like this board to approve. At our September 23rd meeting of the college council, the college council approved a change in our governance plans dealing with CLT representation. We had two provisions that were duplicated representation, and we approved eliminating one and retaining a provision that provides for two CLTs representatives on our governance body. We also had a change that reflects, that deals with how adjuncts are selected to be delegates to our governance body. We had a provision that was a little bit cumbersome, but we're just changing it, and we're also changing their term of office from annual elections to a three-year term of office. On October 28th, college, at the October 28th college council meeting, two other changes were approved to our governance plan. One was that our executive committee of our college council, we have a bicameral body where we have a college council and an academic senate, it was decided that our executive committee should be comprised in the same way as the executive committee of the academic senate, thereby freeing some faculty to serve on committees. Because we have a provision in our governance plan that if you're on the committee of the college council, you're excused from the academic senate because we meet at the same time. And the last change is, we eliminated a sentence in our plan that required every committee of the academic senate to have an equal number of faculty. We, by experience, know that some of our committees require more members than others, and so now the committee on committees is given the latitude to appoint people to the various standing policy committees in accordance with the number of people they need to conduct their business. Those are the four changes approved over these two board meetings. We also had some problem dealing with quorum, so we had this discussed at several meetings, but we had it voted at the, at the September 29th meeting, at the September 23rd, and the October 28th meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of item B6?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. And President Perez, you have to stay seated.
Sure.
You were on for item B7, a naming at the Borough of Manhattan Community College.
Yes, we, we've been finding it very challenging to raise the dollars that we had historically through the corporate and personal giving. We have been looking at other ways, and one of those that our colleagues at the four year institutions have been instituting are the naming opportunities and using this as a form of also fundraising. We are looking at, this is the beginning of naming opportunities at the college, as well as we're looking at the naming of some of our theaters as well. So this is really our first shot at giving an opportunity for someone that's been generous to the institution in the tune of about a quarter million dollars, and naming our simulation lab after the Lanza family, and it's hopeful that we will continue to build on this in the future. So this is our goal.
Well, congratulations. I may have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Karen Gold.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have the honor of presenting to you the Herb Kurtz Endowed Chair, which is 1.6 million in endowment funds that have been provided to the college to create a new endowed chair in constitutional rights. And this will be, take place in the Department of Political Science and will promote, as you know, teaching and research in constitutional law, legal rights, and the organization of law in the United States. We are thrilled with this gift. Herbert Kurtz is also a member of our foundation board, and it's a wonderful way to honor him and the college at the same time.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to Senior Vice President Rick Shafer.
Yes, thank you. This is another revision to the governance plan of the university center, this time to establish the Macaulay Honors College as a unit within the university center. For the last nine years, the Macaulay Honors College has operated with great distinction as a joint program involving a number of CUNY's undergraduate colleges, now numbering This resolution establishes the Macaulay Honors College formally as a unit with its own governance plan. As a result, Macaulay Honors College will be able to offer joint undergraduate degrees with the participating colleges. Approval of curricula programs and the awarding of undergraduate degrees will require action by both the governing bodies of Macaulay Honors College and each of the participating colleges.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let me introduce my remarks by making them somewhat briefer than they might otherwise. The bylaws of the university require that with respect to university-wide programs that the University Faculty Senate be involved in their origination or design or governance. When the Macaulay Honors College was created, it was not yet a university-wide program, so it made some sense for it not having been given to the Senate for its consideration. That is, by this resolution, no longer the case, and this resolution, which creates it as a university-wide body, should have been shared with the Senate initially before coming to this committee. Secondly, the document as presented does not integrate in any way whatsoever the connection between the Honors College and the Graduate School and University Center that is under the umbrella of the President of the Graduate School and University Center, and that President plays no, the Center plays no government, governance or budgetary role, and indeed, the President is not a party to the appointment of the Dean either in an advisory way or as a, as the supervisor of that deanship. That makes it entirely different than any other unit of the university, and in fact, I would think that the President himself should object. But that's up to... Third, and rather more important from the point of view of the faculty, is that the constitution of the consorcial faculty in this document is ineptly conceived and in the form expressed unworkable. The faculty consists of annual, the annual appointees, persons who teach in the year, academic year, for example, 2009, 2010, as a function of their teaching honors courses at various colleges in that same year. Hence, their experience in that teaching role is not going to function necessarily to inform planning, curriculum revision, admission standards, et cetera, for the years subsequent after they have taught and become consorcial faculty just for that year. The graduate school, when it was initially created in 1965, created the concept of the consorcial faculty, and each such appointee remained on the faculty for two years succeeding the year of their active service, which would give that consorcial faculty, did give that consorcial faculty, a history and a mechanism for governing the graduates of the school. The limitation of faculty and membership only to the year that they teach a course is actually, it's, never mind, I'll leave that out. That was nasty, and I forget. So finally, with respect to the, the final business about other committees, it would be really basically impossible under E1 for the committees to operate successfully for, because by the time if they were beginning to operate in September, they wouldn't actually have a faculty, and if they were then operating this in the spring, they would be operating with a faculty which is basically going to go out of existence weeks at commencement. But drafts persons simply don't have any experience with, or don't seem to have used their experience with academic life to... I recommend that it go back for reconsideration, at least with respect to the creation of the governing council, so that it will integrate the faculty in going forward, and that it be presented to the Senate for further remarks, but that's not that important, but it presented to the President of the Graduate School.
Rick, why don't you respond?
Yeah, let me respond if I might. First, I thought we had consulted with the University Faculty Senate, as we do with all governance plans, by providing a copy of the draft governance plan to the chairperson of the University Faculty Senate. If because of the holidays and other reasons, there was not enough time for you all to consult your various constituencies, I regret that, and as I've indicated to Manfred, we would certainly take into account your comments on this, and if there were some that we thought had merit, we could do some fine tuning between now and the board meeting, but I don't think that's actually necessary.
Can you do it, Rick? I'm sorry.
Okay, secondly...
Your machine isn't done.
It is, but it's not close enough. Secondly, in fact, this is not the first time that we've created a unit under the umbrella of the University Center in which the President of the Graduate School and University Center plays no role in the appointment. That is, in fact, true of the Dean of the Graduate School of Journalism. It is also true of the Dean of the School of Professional Studies, although the President of the Graduate School and University Center plays a different role in SPS, but plays no role at all in the Graduate School of Journalism. So this is not the first time that we have done this, and I don't see any problem in that structure. Finally, with respect to the faculty itself, I, you may not be aware, Stefan, that the faculty from around the campuses who participate in teaching at Macaulay Honors College generally agree to do so for two or three years. So it's not as though the faculty turns over every year. There's a fair degree of continuity from year to year, and therefore, they, the faculty has a chance to achieve a level of continuity and expertise. I think there will be time, either in the late spring or early fall of each year, to organize the committees so that they can function. But as the Chancellor said before, governance plans are living documents, and they grow and change as the institution grows and changes. The, the structure of Macaulay Honors College right now is a very simple consorcial structure, and the faculty bodies really have only two functions, which is to award degrees, well, three functions, to award degrees, to review curriculum, and to pass on the question of reappointment if there are problems with the teaching of some of the faculty. So I think we have, it is true, a very simple and streamlined structure, but I think it can and will work, and if problems arise, we'll come back and, and address them as we go forward. But I think this, this structure is the right structure for Macaulay Honors College as it exists today.
Can I respond?
Please.
I don't see anything particularly admirable about the fact that the two other institutions that you mentioned are housed in the University Center without the sincerity of the President of the institution. The fact that you've done it before doesn't impress me. But it's a drafts person's issue. You could easily have drafted this so that the appointments be two years, or three years, or five years, or forever. That's two words in the document, to say, well, we'll fix it later, when it's an obvious flaw right now, just makes no sense. And it isn't the case that I saw this, whether, whether it's because, whatever the reason, I didn't see this until I got this last week with respect to this meeting. We had a chance to look. This is not something I would have overlooked, and this is not something that faculty members generally would overlook. I'm glad that the Honors College faculty... But do you know how many words it takes to institutionalize that in the governance plan? How is this governance plan going to work with respect to modification and amendment? You say it's a living document. I don't see how it works very well, because that, if it takes three or four or five meetings for them to, to make an amendment, the way it does, for example, at the Graduate School, and they only have four meetings a year, or the CUNY BA has only four meetings a year, what's the guarantee that you could amend it at all? All right, anyway, I just wanted to, to bow off about the things that I care about, and I care about the governance with respect to faculty.
Manfred.
I think, as Stefan's pointed out, there, there are two issues here. One is the issue of process, and the other is the issue of the document itself. But they're intertwined. The UFS, when it gets a document like this, takes it seriously. We also think about the timelines involved. This was not on the agenda of this meeting, the time when we held our pre-meetings with the appropriate Vice Chancellor. When we held our pre-meeting with Vice Chancellor Waters, this was not simply on the agenda. And so therefore, it was not highest on our priority list. We have limited resources in terms of, of what we pay attention to, and there are a number of other issues on the road that we do also have to pay attention to, and the holidays were there, so that we really did not get this in time to consider it in an adequate way. And I should add that consideration includes consultation with college senators. I'm, I'm take this very seriously, with college senators when that's appropriate. This body represents faculty at various other colleges. One of the other hats I wear is as a member of the Governance Committee of the Lehman College Senate. Well, this is something that is supposed to come to the Lehman College Senate Governance Committee for its consideration. Well, it's not, because it's came so quickly to our attention, and it never came up in, in our, before the pre-meetings with Vice Chancellor Waters, it's not her fault, I don't think. And so we never brought it. We never have not been able to bring it to the Lehman College Senate or to the other senators for their considered opinion. Governance documents are really, really important. It's more than just a naming of some chair or the naming of a Carolina library, but we're treating it that way. We're treating it as if this is a throwaway document. In reality, we should have had discussions of this with the Dean. Now, I praised John W. Galisco, who's Dean of the School of Professional Studies, some time ago. Now, why did I do that? Well, among other one reasons is he is what I said. The other is we've had extensive, really deep and extensive discussions about this with him. We don't agree, but we've had discussions. How many discussions have we had with the Dean of the Macaulay Honors College? None. None whatsoever. I don't understand why that would be. I suggest, and I really, we take these things very deeply seriously, I suggest we delay this. There's no reason for a delay until we can have this considered in a serious, professional, thorough manner.
Let, let me respond to some of your, your comments. One, the genius of the establishment of the University Center, which is, from a corporate standpoint, a shell that gives degree granting responsibility to the elements that become part of that shell. And that was the genius of when this was thought of by Al Baucher several decades ago, when the University Center was attached to the Graduate School. They, they really are, are very separate institutions, but it was set up without even the understanding that in the future, this would be an extraordinarily powerful vehicle for the university to act as the integrated university again. And when we placed the Graduate School of Journalism within the University Center, it was endowed with degree granting authority. When we placed the School of Professional Studies within the shell of the graduates of, of the University Center, it, it was endowed with degree granting authority. And that's really what we're seeking here, degree granting authority. In the initial stages of the Macaulay Honors College, what the college is actually doing is nothing more than adopting the curriculum that each individual governance body associated with the Macaulay Honors College have adopted. The, the faculty at each of the institutions has already acted. They have acted by assigning faculty, and they have acted by creating a curriculum. The senators have acted. They have acted in the past, and there is absolutely no change in their action. We are not asking for any amendment at all. What the governance charter is basi, what the governance plan is doing is basically saying, we, the faculty of the Macaulay Honors College adopts the curriculum that the Lehman faculty have adopted, that the Brooklyn College faculty have adopted, that the faculty at Queens has adopted, at Brooklyn has adopted, and at CCNY has adopted. They have already acted. They have gone through the, the governance strictures that we hold very dear here. There is no change that we are asking in the adoption of the curriculum. So the faculty are in place, the curriculum is in place, the degree granting authority is in place, and all we're doing by this document is codifying something that we've already acted upon. Now, in the future, if the Macaulay Honors College wishes to adopt their own curriculum, that is something of a different kettle of fish. There is something that we would have to, to opine upon, and I would agree with you. But with respect to the action tonight, all we are doing is saying we are respectful of what the, what the senators have done at each of the individual campuses, and I explained that when I brought in all of the presidents. I said, you can bring this back to your campuses, but they have already acted, and the presidents understand that they have already acted, and Bill Kelly, whose name you have invoked here, is deeply enthusiastic about doing this. So all of the bases are covered. The one issue that you're bringing up is a legitimate issue, and that is something that we would have to bring back to this body if indeed the Macaulay Honors College wishes, and this is something in the future, and you have the provision here, to allow them to create their own degree program and associate a faculty with that degree program. That is not being asked for at this particular time, but it gives the option in the future to exercise that prerogative. So Madam Chair, I would say, based upon the governance structure's already been covered here, that we ought to move this as it is, and that we have to, we would have to come back to this committee in the future if, if the Macaulay Honors College wishes to, to develop a degree program that has not already been developed by Brooklyn College and at Queens College and everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor, and I will also ask that Vice Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Schaefer work with, in this before the full meeting, to clarify that, I think you brought up two points about the amendment process and the clarification of terms. You said that there were certain words that can be introduced into the language to do that, and I'm sure that the Vice Chancellor, Senior Vice Chancellor will work with you to accomplish those goals. If they're not, are they, yes?
I can make one additional comment. We've heard reference to the School of Journalism and SPS. When those governance documents were prepared, the University Faculty Senate was deeply involved in the process from the get-go. Particularly the SPS, where we had extensive discussions between the UFS and interested parties in the administration. In the School of Journalism, there was a committee to establish the governance body that had UFS-appointed members on the committee, this was before I became Chair. It doesn't mean we agreed with the outcome in every instance. That's clear, we, we don't necessarily agree. But simply to present, present a document here that has not had prior consultation, back-and-forth conversation between human beings, that's what we're talking about, conversation between human beings. A document over the transom is, and then to find it appear on the agenda after the meetings that discuss the agenda have taken place, is an entirely different thing, and one who should never expect the absence of such a reaction on the part of the UFS when such a procedure is engaged in. This is an over-the-transom governance document with no preceding consultation, no human conversation.
Madam Chairman, point of clarification. When a college senate opines on a degree program, the University Faculty Senate has no voice. The voice is the local senate, and the voice of the local senators have already been heard on all of the curricula that are developed here for which the Macaulay Honors College says, we are adopting what the faculty at each of these individual colleges has already done. So I say there is no authority here. But putting that aside, we would always bring in faculty to, to look at this if indeed we were developing a new curriculum, which is not the case here.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may make one last comment. Governance documents not only deal with curriculum, they create structures that protect academic freedom and the right of people to...
academic freedom and the right of people to teach as they so wish. It's not just curriculum.
The fact, the curriculum that is being developed went through all of those processes, Manfred, you know that.
I know, but there are other factors.
Well, every other factor, every other factor that you can bring to the table were discussed by the individual campuses, because they never would have been approved by the university, by the Board of Trustees, had they not been. All the Macaulay Honors College is doing is saying, we think those programs are great, and we're going to adopt it, and all of the bases have been covered by the campuses.
We didn't, as campus senates, discuss hiring practices.
Thank you. Mr. Provost?
I have a question. What is the implementation process of this, if it is approved?
It will be effective for the class that comes in duly admitted to the Macaulay Honors College. So, the students, the students that will be admitted once this board approves the degree granting authority will have their degrees joint with the campus that they study in. So, if you, Corey, were to start at the Macaulay Honors College in the fall, four years, five years, six years later, when you would get your degree if it were at CCNY, you would get a degree from CCNY and a degree from Macaulay, because the Macaulay degree is exactly the same as the CCNY degree.
It's a joint degree, for students now admitted, and when they graduate, it would become a joint degree of the two entities.
So, essentially, this would just affect the incoming class for the.
That is correct.
It won't affect students who are in the program now. Well, that being said, would it, would it be, because I'm hearing the concerns from the, from UFS, or from Trustee Philip, and would it, would it, can we just stay with this until the, maybe the June meeting?
Yeah, let me just say that we have, we have a June meeting, and this is the, this is the committee meeting, our next board meeting. And if we don't pass it by that board meeting, then that incoming class in September would not, it would not be able to work with it. So, the urgency of doing it now is to make sure that the incoming class in September, for the benefit of the students, would, they would be eligible for that. So, I'm going to take Chair's prerogative at this point and ask for a motion for approval.
I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, yes.
Pardon me. I agree with the Chancellor that this governance plan should be adopted, but I have to concur, that's as to the substance, but I have to concur that I, as to the process undertaking to get us here, I am concerned, even if it's, albeit the perception of the lack of consultation with the, with the faculty senate. If it has to be moved today, I don't know if there's a way to do it, subject to some type of consultation until the June board meeting. But the substance is perfect, but I, it just makes me a teeny bit uncomfortable that there may be a lingering perception that may hurt the integrity of this going forward.
We can ask to go back, and if there's any changes that we think are substantive. Again, I don't want to challenge the senates on the individual campuses that have already voted for this. They have voted and made their approval, because they've been giving this degree now for eight years. And all we are saying is, we're adopting that degree. So, from where I sit, Trustee Robles-Ramon, those conversations have already taken place.
Agreed.
So, I don't see, I don't see the substance of the argument.
Look, I just want to point out, I didn't want to get into a back-and-forth on this, but Trustee Philip had an extensive conversation with Executive Vice Chancellor Logue on this subject, I believe, four weeks ago, and was provided with a copy of the initial draft of this governance plan a week later. So, it was not, it's true, it was not originally on the agenda for the committee meeting, but this, this was not, as has been characterized, a governance plan that was sent over the transom a few days before this meeting.
And again, we've asked Vice Chancellor Schaefer to work with them for any amendments that can be, or the language that can be, to clarify it before the June meeting. Is it the May meeting?
The April meeting.
The April meeting, I'm sorry. It's been moved, has it been moved in second?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay. I may have a motion for approval.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Jeff.
It's been moved.
I thought we had the second one.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
People said aye.
Motion carry?
One.
He's a majority to pass.
We had, I guess we're going to have to take a hand, a roll.
Who's the second abstention?
He's a majority to pass.
So, can we have all, let me do it again, those, please raise your hand so that we can count. All those approved, please say aye. I mean, raise your hand, please.
One, two, three.
I don't get a vote, correct?
No, not in the committee.
Three. Three. Those opposed? And abstentions?
Passes.
It passes, yeah. Three abstentions.
Fact, it's unanimous.
Abstentions counted.
Under parliamentary procedure.
Thank you very much.
I'm not a no vote.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just like that, I would like to see counsel bend over backwards to work with the faculty senate, all newcomers, if possible, time allows.
Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Schaefer, as in the past, has always been willing to accommodate.
If I may speak, I, we're happy to work with Vice Chancellor Schaefer. Our problems with the process here don't reflect on anyone personally, and I should add that our main problem, of course, was, had it been on the agenda, it would have been a different story. It wasn't on the agenda, that's a fact.
And we will make sure, I hear you, and we will address that issue when we go back to this, Chancellor. Thank you very much. And I do hear that. Can we move to the Chancellor of University Report? President Gold.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm sure this is uncontroversial. I have the great joy and personal pleasure of introducing our new Vice President for Enrollment Management, our first Vice President for Enrollment Management at Brooklyn College, having had that be an AVP position prior to this appointment. And Dr. Stephen Joyner from Southern Connecticut is here with me this evening, and I know he's very pleased to be here. I know I'm supposed to be brief, so I will say simply that Dr. Joyner has 18 years of enrollment management experience at multiple institutions. He began at Georgia State, where he also received a PhD, worked at Florida International, two community colleges, and most recently, Southern Connecticut State. He has hands-on experience, and I want to underscore that, because we need it, and oversight responsibility in virtually every area that you can conceive of related to enrollment management, and we are absolutely thrilled to have Dr. Joyner joining us soon.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
Could I ask a question?
When we, oh, yes.
Do all the other colleges have this position, and did Brooklyn have it before, or is this a re, filling a spot that existed, or is this something new because of the increased enrollment?
Most of the senior colleges have vice presidents, although there is some variation. Brooklyn College has had an AVP position, and the search for that went unfilled, was unsuccessful for two years running. It's a very competitive market, and it is also an indication, you're absolutely right, that Brooklyn College wants to pay more attention to enrollment management at a time when this is much more complicated. So, we see this as a real step forward for us, and we will have this strongly interconnected with our marketing and communication efforts in recruitment.
Absolutely. Now.
You had a motion, second?
I need a second.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Welcome to the City University of New York.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to have a brief comment?
Sure, I would love to. I'm thrilled to be joining Brooklyn College as the next Vice President for Enrollment Management. I look forward to my start date in June with great excitement and anticipation, and I thank Dr. Gould and this board for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome. President Pollard. Appointment of a Senior Vice President and Chief Operations Officer. Please, it's your stage.
Good evening. I am delighted to have this opportunity to present Dr. Lloyd Antoine Blanchett as Chief Operating Officer for Medgar Evans College. Lloyd has a significant background in public finance and a 23-year experience that includes experience in finance, management, public relations, the academy, and in government. His experience in government includes steps in the White House Budget Office, NASA, and the Small Business Administration, where he was responsible for a budget of something in the neighborhood of $200 billion. I am tickled to death to have Lloyd join us after spending some time at LSU, where he was the financial officer for the recent chancellor there, Sean O'Keefe, who also served as head of NASA during the Bush administration. Lloyd has hit the ground running, and I look forward to having him duly installed here as Chief Operating Officer. He has tremendous academic experience as well, both at the University of Washington, Syracuse University, and most recently, at LSU. So, I take delight in presenting him as our candidate and search that includes more than 100 candidates.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. You're not spaceships, but, or outer space, but Brooklyn somewhat, no, just joking. Welcome to the City University of New York. Would you like to have a moment, just to say?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am honored to have been selected by President Pollard for this position and by the vote of the board. I'm thrilled to be a new member of the CUNY family, and I look forward to serving the Medgar Evans students and working with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the, of the committee. It's a great pleasure for me to refer the candidate for Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs, Dr. Carmen Coballes Vega, for the consideration of this committee. I was told, to be brief, we had a national search that was coordinated by the Association of Community College Trustees, and we had a robust pool, and Dr. Coballes Vega showed that he had impeccable credentials, which you have all in front of you, that she's a seasoned academic leader with extensive senior management experience the last 13 years as dean in different colleges of education, professional studies, and related areas, and linguist, ESL specialist, and has, clearly was, a consensus candidate among the campus community. Everybody thought that among a really, really strong field, she had the background, the credentials, the expertise to be our next academic leader at Ostos, and the entire Ostos community is thrilled to have her be presented before this committee today. So, I am delighted, she is superb, she is ready, and we are eager, and I look forward to your positive vote.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion carries. Welcome to the City University of New York.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, all the members of the board committee. I really appreciate this opportunity. To me, it is one of those glorious opportunities that comes only once in your life, and that is the one to return to my hometown, New York City, and to the work of higher education, which is much needed in this area, and to Ostos Community College. And I thank President Rodriguez for this opportunity to be affiliated with this college. And I really look forward to seeing all of you as we move out and about through the years. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for joining us. Next, we move to, would you like to introduce Kenneth Norris? Oh, welcome. He's a new member of the Office of Academic Affairs, who will present Items C4 and C5 appointments with waivers of the bylaws.
Thank you. There are two faculty appointments with waivers of the bylaws that require the committee's approval, both at the School of Health Professions at Hunter College, which I will present together. They are as follows. Appointment of Dr. Thomas Mate as professor with tenure, with waiver of Section 6.2.2 of the bylaws effective February 1, 2010. Also, reappointment of Dr. Lorna Thorpe as associate professor with early tenure, with waiver of Section 6.2.2 of the bylaws effective September 1, 2010. These personnel actions have been voted on by colleges' personnel and budget committees and are strongly recommended by the president. The Office of Academic Affairs and Human Resource Management have reviewed and approved them. Madam Chair, I present these items for the committee's consideration.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Items 3A through Q are additional faculty appointments and actions that are provided for the committee's information only, as they do not require a report or a vote. This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And now, we'll have the reported Vice Chancellor, Waters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to take the first item on my report, the computer monitoring report that Vice Chancellor Schaefer will give to the committee.
Yes, under the policy relating to use of computer resources of the university, I am required to report each year as to how many instances occurred during the prior year where university computer was viewed under the exceptions to the general principle. This includes things like law enforcement events or investigations of violations of university policy. Has it been used in the past year? Two, neither of them.
Thank you, Rick. On a second note, most of you know, almost all of you should know, that we have been implementing CUNY First, an enterprise-wide computer system, and this year, for the first time, the diversity report, the affirmative action summary data report, will be produced by CUNY First. I have preliminary numbers that I am going to share with you, with the intent of sharing the full report between now and the June board meeting, when you'll have an opportunity to go over it, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about it. I just want to give you some high-level figures that are preliminary right now. On the instructional staff, the number of employees has risen by 11 percent, by 1,164 individuals. Women are currently 51.5 percent of the instructional staff, and our total minority representation has risen from 37.9 percent in 2007 to 39.3 percent in 2009. This is all of the instructional staff. On the classified staff side, the number of employees grew by 322, which is a 5.8 percent change between 2007 and 2009. White-collar workers increased by 281. Blue-collar employees rose from 1,734 in 2007 to 1,792 in 2009, and our skilled trades group declined slightly, from 746 to 732 employees. Females in the classified staff increased slightly, from 2,651 in 2007 to 2,820 in 2009, and the representation of traditional minority groups changed from 67.9 percent to 68.7 percent. On the faculty, the total number was 7,186, an increase of 627 since 2007. Women held a total of 3,358 appointments, an increase of 348, which is 11.6 percent. an increase of 348, which is 11.6%. And total minorities rose by 289 to 2,274,